It's six oh two and I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Matthews, will you call, call the roll?
Mr. Culp?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Matthews, here.
All right. Chief Stegelmeyer, will you please proceed with a reading of casualties?
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of May twenty second through June the fourth of twenty twenty four. Trooper First Class, Aaron Pelletier, Connecticut State Police, Connecticut, end of watch, May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Police Officer Jamal Mitchell, the Minneapolis Police Department, Minnesota, end of watch, May thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Agent Davis Martinez, from the Maryland Department of Public Safety, Congressional Services, the parole and probation division, Maryland, end of watch, May thirty first, twenty twenty four. Police Officer Joshua Brice, from the Gillah River Police Department Tribal Police, end of watch, June first, twenty twenty four. And Senior Police Officer Vincent Ortiz Jr., the Corpus Christi Police Department, Texas, end of watch, June first, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Will everyone please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Can I, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
New business. Chief Stegelmeyer, you have Resolutions forty-four, twenty twenty four, and forty-five, twenty twenty four.
Good evening again, Board. The first resolution is to enter, have the Township Administrator enter an agreement with the Miami'sburg School District to write a school resource officer for the middle school in Jane Chance, which is schools located within the township. The current agreement that we have with the school district expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty four, so we're coming up to that date. The new agreement has been reviewed by our law director and we've gone over some minor adjustments. And again, that's been reviewed with the law director and the Township Administrator. We'd like to present this request to you that would begin July the first of twenty twenty four and would run until June thirtieth of twenty twenty nine. That will expire at that time. We'll re-enter and go into a new agreement with the school district. And I'm available for any questions on that one.
Okay. Any questions?
The next resolution, Board, is to authorize the sale of Lieutenant Ferris, who, as you know, retired May thirty first, his Glock Model thirty, forty-three X service weapon. This is a contractual agreement that we have with the OPBA that if a person retires in good standing, that they can buy their duty weapon for one dollar. And that's again per the contract with the OPBA. And this is just a memo asking for permission to go ahead and sell him his service weapon after thirty-four years. I'd be glad to answer any questions for that.
All right. Mr. Carlson, you have Resolution forty-six, twenty twenty four.
Good evening, Board. Resolution forty-six is a resolution that would authorize Township Administrator to execute a contract agreement between Miami Township and Montgomery County for the administration of the Edge Grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was awarded to Rushlight Assets, a business over on Washington Church Road. As you recall, the last meeting, the first step was to enter into an agreement with the township and Rushlight. That was transmitted to the county and then they forward disagreement between us and the county. Again, we're the sort of middleman. It's a transfer of funds from the county to us and then us to the business. The primary reason that this agreement exists is that the township, we are the ones who are reviewing all of the materials submitted to confirm that they are eligible for those funds to be dispersed. So again, this is the final step that would allow Rushlight to receive all of these funds once they've completed construction and met their job creation requirements. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
Thank you. Mr. McCord, you have Resolution forty-seven, twenty twenty four, Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty four, and a motion.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. Resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty four is a resolution authorizing the Township Administrator to enter where the contract with Anthem Incorporated for healthcare insurance for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five plan year. We discussed this in our prior work session and nothing has substantially changed since that presentation regarding the proposal. And so we're asking permission tonight for him to sign that contract so that we can begin the process to implement before July one. Resolution forty-eight is related and similar and it regards the health savings account contributions from the township as the employer to the employees who enter into the high deductible health plan, which are HSA eligible under Internal Revenue Service guidelines. And it would maintain the contribution levels of two thousand dollars for single coverage, four thousand dollars for employee plus and then family coverage, which is similar to what we've done in previous years. And finally, the, the third is a request for a motion to authorize the offering of employee paid dental coverage through Superior Dental. It was after looking at competitive bids that were submitted to the township through our broker, McGowan Brave Bender. Decided Superior, we felt Superior had the better coverage and the better price point for the employees. So all of that's kind of packaged together. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have regarding any of those three requests. Any questions?
Mr. Matthews, you have Resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty four.
Good evening, Board. Montgomery County offers a program called Youth Works, which is a countywide program that lets high school students work for employers in the area. And I would like to request that we would, we would obtain one intern from that program. And the cost of it is paid by the county, so there's no cost to the township. And we primarily want to use them for scanning documents, old meeting minutes that go back to like nineteen twenty seven that are sitting in a cardboard box in the room. We want to get them into digital. But I've also talked with the planning department and HR and they have some other work they could use this person for. Our, our legal counselor has reviewed the agreement and they has reported that is acceptable. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So this is a high school student or someone that's left high school or?
They're, they're in that age group where they're like a junior, senior, or just, or just left this, this year.
Okay. And do they come from one of our local high schools or are they just randomly assigned?
Well, yeah, they, they make, the youth work programs tries to orient it to people that are close to the, to the employer so that they don't have to travel. I don't know if that means that they have to be a Miami Township, I mean Miami'sburg or West Carrollton. But if you do know somebody that might be interested, if they, you know, we can request someone by name. So if you know someone that might be interested, you could tell them to apply and ask them to contact me with their name and I can request someone that is from within the township. That's a great idea.
All right. I appreciate the department heads giving us an overview of the issues tonight. There'll be no public comments because I don't, there's no one here tonight. So we'll skip the public comment section, go straight into the votes. For, of the resolutions and motions, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution forty-four, twenty twenty four, a resolution to authorize a township administrator to enter into, into an agreement with the Miami'sburg City School District to implement the school resource officer program. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution forty-five, twenty twenty four, a resolution to sell property to a retiring employee. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
A motion to approve Resolution forty-six, twenty twenty four, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an edge program project agreement with the Montgomery County, with Montgomery County for utilization of edge funding. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Motion to approve Resolution forty-seven, twenty twenty four, a resolution to enter into a contract for health insurance. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
A motion to approve Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty four, a resolution to authorize the funding of employer contributions to health savings accounts. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
A motion to authorize the township administrator to execute an agreement to offer employee paid dental coverage through dental care plus for the plan year July first, twenty twenty four through June thirty.
Okay, should be, okay, yep. So I'm going to reread this. I'll make a motion to authorize the township administrator to execute an agreement to offer employee paid dental coverage through Superior Dental Care for the plan year July first, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And are we asking for a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Mr. Culp?
Are we asking for a vote? Okay.
Aye.
Yes, I think so. That's correct. We do need a vote. Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
A motion to approve Resolution forty-nine, twenty twenty four, a resolution to authorize the execution of a work experience and guidance program agreement. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
So now we are at the public hearing section of the meeting. We have two public hearings, hearings. I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case four, three, four, one, eight. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Zoning case four, three, four, one, eight is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. Please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The board will now hear the report of the staff. Mr. Carlson?
We're switching things up, reporting from over here today.
Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met and do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Board. All the requirements for this case have been met. I do have a recommendation from the Township Zoning Commission. Quick summary of the case, this is a final development plan request within the airport plan development, specifically for an eighty-five hundred square foot private airport hangar within section two of the airport plan development. This is the area, southernmost, westernmost, again off of State Route seven forty-one. Here's another look at the township level. The property is again southern, southeastern of the township off seven forty-one. Area two is shown here within the larger airport plan development. Area two was meant for office use as well as airports and associated hangars and support facilities. So this is a permitted use within this development area. And actually, this area was shown in the Dayton Wright Brothers Airport Long Range Master Plan as being designed for public hangar, private hangars, rather. So quickly, taking a look at the site plan, the site is located south. It would be the new southernmost building along seven forty-one in the airport plan development. Taking a look at the site, by a pretty wide margin meets all setbacks. It's a pretty massive property and it's located very close to the taxiway, existing taxiway A, as you can see to the bottom of this picture, that would be the east. So this new proposed hangar, again, private hangar that would be accessed by existing taxiway A through an existing access point onto State Route seven forty-one. So there's new, no new access point required, which is definitely a positive. It's a busy intersection, a fewer new access points is a positive thing. And you can actually see to the south, left side of the screen, there are additional development areas that have been padded out as part of the preliminary plan and Dayton Wright Brothers Master Plan. The landscape plan is one item that has been a point of consideration as part of the development standards. Bringing the FAA rules and guidelines into consideration has been a major component here. The zoning commission has stipulated to allow the applicant more time to work with staff in the city of Dayton to produce a landscape plan that meets all FAA standards, working with Mike Cross with the city of Dayton Planning Engineering. There's been some changes in, in requirements for trees around airports to meet certain requirements like not having seeds, fruits, or berries, things that are going to attract birds and wildlife. So again, trying to make sure that we are fully compliant with all FAA and city of Dayton requirements for landscaping. So this would allow more time for the applicant to work with staff, but still walk away with an approval. Staff certainly feels we can come to a good agreement. They want the site to look nice and be well landscaped as well. The lighting plan, it's primarily just wall packs attached to the exterior of the building. It meets all standards of the Township zoning resolution, three thousand Kelvin lighting temperature and maximum foot candle levels. The building elevation shown here, the west elevation, again, this is the side that will be facing State Route seven forty-one as part of the airport plan development. This is the sort of key facade that has always needed to be of an elevated design standard. The applicant has integrated a lot of glass and brick stone material at the request of staff from the original plan. Certainly, staff is very happy with the, the creative design, especially compared to some of the other buildings that are out there currently. Hopefully, long-term slated to be removed, cleaned up, or allow for other expansions. But again, this is a, a great step in beautifying the airport and making this look a little bit higher, higher class. So again, very high level. Staff did not have any concerns with the siding or building design. But the two items that the zoning commission stipulated in their approval was a five, five to zero vote for approval with stipulations. One, applicant must provide a lighting plan that meets the requirements for Article Seven. This has been provided. So no, no concerns with lighting. But then the second item is still pending, allowing the applicant to work with staff in the city of Dayton to create a landscape plan. My understanding is there's a meeting scheduled later this week. Part of my staff will be on that meeting to make sure we're coordinating. So as part of a zoning certificate review, we'll be able to review that landscape plan for compliance. But beyond that, certainly staff feels that the proposed development meets the goals of our comprehensive plan as well as Dayton Wright Brothers Airport Master Plan. If there's any questions or concerns, I would be happy to discuss. Unfortunately, the applicant was not able to attend tonight. So I think that I, I covered most of my questions and concerns with them ahead of time, but staff certainly is comfortable at this point with the development.
All right. So the applicant is not in attendance tonight. As you said, the, there are no proponents in attendance and there are no opponents in attendance. So I'm going to motion that we close the public hearing for zoning case four, three, four, one, eight.
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
So I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution zero, five, zero, two, zero, two, four, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for area two of the airport plan development under zoning case four, three, four, one, eight for land zone PD five, planned mixed use district. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves a final development plan for area two in the airport plan development under zoning case number four, three, four, one, eight, and upholds the zoning commission recommendations.
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
So now we're going into public hearing number two.
That's correct.
I make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case number four, six, three, two, four. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Matthews, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Zoning case number four, six, three, two, four is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. Please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. And the board will now hear the report of the staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met and do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Board. Yes, the legal requirements have been met and I do have a recommendation from the zoning commission. This rezoning case actually was originally heard in a work session at the zoning commission and then as our process states, was filed by the zoning commission. So they approved their own filing. But at the end of the day, the crux of this case is looking at some of the zoning designations of our existing township parks. Here's a quick chart to show the, the parks that Miami Township owns or is sort of part of our network. The red parcels shown, the designations on the right are zoning designations that are not park designations. So we have several parks that are not necessarily zoning conforming parks. Most of these parks were cases where as part of residential development, these areas were carved out for park use and were turned over to the township. And it's sort of just a housekeeping item that we should be bringing these parks to a park zoning district. One for zoning compliance, two, just to protect the asset of the park, to have them in a park zoning district. Here's a quick look, actually, as part of the very recently adopted parks plan. One of the goals was to rezone all parks into appropriate park designations. So very excited. This will be the first step toward moving and making progress in our parks plan. Very exciting. These specific parks are highlighted here on the map just for reference for where they are. The specific zoning designation that we would be looking at bringing these parks into is the PS one active recreation district. A lot of these uses are significantly more intense than what we have, I believe, any intention on doing as part of the Parks Master Plan. But playgrounds is actually one of the uses listed in the PS one district. The PS two, which is the passive recreation district, really is almost entirely meant for trails and trees and sort of sitting outdoors. So a, a second step moving forward, planning staff, working with the parks staff, would like to sort of retool our parks districts to better match kind of our intentions for how we can use these parks. There's sort of these two buckets that are, no middle ground on kind of how we can use the parks. So with that, all of these parcels are included in the zoning case and will all be rezoned to PS one until longer term kind of retooling of the zoning resolution can be done. But the zoning commission recommended approval in a five to zero vote with no stipulations. Again, this would bring all of our parks into the appropriate zoning designation. I'd be happy to discuss if you have any questions.
So there is no applicant, right?
Nope.
And there's no proponents in attendance and there are no opponents in attendance. So I motion to close the public hearing for zoning case four, six, three, two, four.
Can I see the list of parks with the color coding again, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second the motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve Resolution zero, five, one, two, zero, two, four, a resolution to adopt a zoning map amendment from R two, single family residential district, R nine, single family residential district, and PD five, planned mixed use district to the PS one active recreation district under zoning case four, six, three, two, four. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves the zoning map amendment under zoning case four, six, three, two, four, and adopts the zoning commission recommendation.
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
It's time for department head comments. Chief Stegelmeyer?
Good evening, Board. I do have one thing I could bring to the board's attention. With me this evening is a guest, Mr. James McCarty. Mr. James McCarty has been named my new assistant chief of police. And I'd like to give you a little background on how this came about. During the month of May, the Township Administrator, along with the police department and help of the human resource manager, conducted a search for a new assistant chief within house. And part of that process included a three-panel interview from chiefs from various jurisdictions that are around the Miami Township area, and a review of the qualifications submitted by each of the applicants. I would like to take a minute just to tell some of the qualifications that helped us come to the conclusion of not just the panel interview, but reviewing their resumes they submitted. And in James's packet, in his background for his former education, James has a master's degree in the Criminal Justice Administration. He received it from the University of Louisville, even though it's a cardinal, I'll forgive him because I'm a bear cat. He also has been through formal police executive training. He's a recent graduate of the one hundred and fifty-first session of the Administrative Officers Course at the Southern Police Institute, which is a nationally recognized upper management police course. James has also been through the Police Executive Leadership College and as well as the Supervisor Training and Education Program. Both are executive level trainings offered by the Ohio Association Chiefs of Police. James, James has been my administrative sergeant for the past two and a half years where he's been instrumental in implementing new programs to take the department in the forward direction. Some of those programs would be our electronic ticket program, our electronic accent recording program. He's our CLIA accreditation manager. He has also implemented our new electronic field training officer program, which has helped us increase the level of training and the accuracy, which can track the progress of new officers. It's just been a blessing to have James aboard to help the police department keep moving towards the twenty-first century and beyond. So I would like to introduce James McCarty. His start date was June the third and I welcome him aboard.
Congratulations. Mr. Swiker?
Good evening, Board. So this past Saturday, Miami Township hosted our second annual fishing derby. I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the families and young anglers for their participation. Their enthusiasm and sportsmanship made the event memorable and everyone, for everyone involved. It was wonderful seeing so many smiling faces and enjoying a morning of fishing, camaraderie, and fun competition. Congratulations to our winners and all for making this derby a great success. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Dayton Mall for their sponsorship and Kona Ice for providing cold treats for the children. I'd like to also thank the Community Foundation for their contribution to the derby prizes and participating the day of the event. Thank you to the Dayton Metro Library for your involvement and blessing the children with books for them to enjoy. I would also like to thank Jones Fish for helping us stock the pond, Larry Kinsler for his donation of a pole that we used for a raffle, fifty fifty, and, or for a raffle, I'm sorry. Chief Stegelmeyer and the Miami Township Police Department for their involvement, having officers come out and enjoy the event. Chief Johnson from Miami Valley Fire District for having a medic and a truck on standby in case someone had an injury. Jill Drew for all her help in the coordinating the event, and Mr. Snyder, his blessing as township administrator. But lastly, I'd like to thank my public work staff for their involvement and the elected officials for their support in hosting this fun community event. Thank you.
Thank you. It was, it was an absolutely great event. I'd like to also recognize that Walmart donated some of the poles that were given to a fourth grade class over in Kinder School and some of those students, I believe, were at the, at the pond the day of the event. So as far as stats go, how many fish did we catch? Do you have any idea?
A lot. We caught a lot. So once, once the sun came up and it warmed up, all the fish were biting. It was just so wonderful. Next year, we're considering adding most caught fish as a prize as well. So just keep it, keep it rocking.
That's great.
All right. My only anecdote about the fishing derby is we had a couple kids come up and ask for more cards to put stickers on. So that's a pretty good sign of lots of bites. It's pretty good, yes. But otherwise, I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McCord?
I'd like to thank Penny Bogner for her efforts on the healthcare renewal for this year. It's always a, seemingly a monumental task and she makes it look not quite painless, but it is, it's, the effort shows. And just want to remind everybody in the room and everybody maybe listening and staff that all of those renewal responses, the documentation needs to be back in the finance office by noon on the fourteenth in order to make sure we have as seamless as possible transition.
And Penny already has the reminder drafted for me, I'm sure. So, but I'll try, I'll try not to give you a reason to send it.
She's, I understand that she's meeting with the ten o'clock roll call with the PD and she was waiting on the vote tonight. She was going to show them what she was going to tell them. So everybody will know by the end of tomorrow.
Sounds good.
What's going on?
I appreciate McGowan Brave Bender being here tonight in case we had questions about the healthcare resolutions. Now, Mr. Snyder, I'm not going to forget you. Now, uh, Mr. Snyder, I'm not going to forget you.
Uh, again, I'd like to thank Jill, Rex, and John in particular, uh, for their work on putting together the fishing derby. Definitely appreciate, uh, all of the work that went into that and the thought, uh, uh, the last couple of years and then putting that event together. It was a great event. So, also again, want to congratulate Assistant Chief McCarty for his appointment. Uh, look forward to working with you, um, and our continuing work with the police department. So, uh, we do have one announcement to make tonight. Um, this was kind of last minute, but we have been informed just, uh, yesterday that a portion of Chautauqua Road between Dayton Cincinnati Pike and Farmington Road is planned to be closed temporarily on Friday, June fourteenth due to ongoing work at the Old Hutchins Power Plant. The closure is anticipated to last one to two hours and we are asking that people check the website, uh, for the city of Miami'sburg, Miami Township, over the coming week for additional information as we get that, so.
Mr. Elected officials' comments now. Mr. Matthews?
I have nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Posey?
Uh, I too would like to extend my welcome to Assistant Chief McCarty. Look forward to your service. It sounds like you've been doing excellent work already and I hope that that will continue. Mr. Schweickert, the problem with building on momentum is, uh, first of all, fishing derby was excellent. It did build on the momentum of last year. And the problem with doing good work is that we expect more good work. Uh, we hope you'll be bringing some similar, uh, events to the, to the board for consideration in the future. But I do think that I can clearly say that this is a Miami Township team effort. Uh, every aspect of the township was represented at the event, although it was spearheaded and primarily staffed with public works. Um, it is nice to see everybody out there. It is nice to see the community members out there and the children clearly had a good time while they were there. So congratulations to everyone, but especially Joe.
Okay, we have no work session or executive session tonight, uh, and, uh, I'll go ahead and move that we adjourn this meeting at, uh, six-thirty-five, six-thirty-four PM.